You do it there, too.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our Des Moines City Council meeting. We have a proclamation that we're going to be reading this evening prior to the beginning of the city council meeting. And so I'm going to do that at this time. We are equitably trying to recognize all members of our community and support their, their future. And this evening, this proclamation is regarding the Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month. So it reads as follows. "The month of May is recognized nationally as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas May 18th is the birthday of Vincent Chin, who was brutally murdered in a hate crime in 1982, and his murder fueled the National Asian American and Pacific Islander activist movement, which continues to this day. And whereas Des Moines is home of nearly seventeen percent of all AAPI community members living in the state of Iowa, and over six percent of Des Moines residents are AAPI community members. And whereas each day, youth of all ages and backgrounds suffer from being bullied in schools and online across the country, which is often compounded in the AAPI community by culture, religious, and linguistic barriers that can keep youth from seeking and receiving help. And whereas the city of Des Moines joins Act to Change, a national nonprofit dedicated to fighting bullying in the AAPI community, in sharing one vision, a world where all youth, including within the AAPI community, have the opportunity to grow up feeling proud and supported in the development of their identities and sharing of their stories. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim, May 2021 is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and May 18th, 2021 is AAPI Day Against Bullying and Hate. And we encourage all residents and visitors to celebrate our diverse heritages and cultures and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, compassionate, and equitable for all. And I want to thank the efforts continuing by our Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission and their staff working to promote equity for all of our citizens." Thank you. We will start our city council meeting at 4:30. But if you registered to speak, so that'll give us forty minutes. Each speaker again is going to get two minutes and we're going to limit the number of speakers to twenty. And so if you're a registered speaker but weren't among that first twenty, your requests will advance to our next agenda in the order those requests were received. And we'll try to monitor that. And if, as we move forward, we need to change that around a little bit, we'll, we'll see how it goes. But we're hopeful that this helps everyone out. So council, we have a, if someone would want to move to amend the procedure rules, we could get the remainder of the meeting started then.
So moved.
All right. It has been moved and that we begin that this evening. Could you pull the council?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes, I was just wondering, do we get a time to speak?
If you'd like to speak, go ahead. I'm sure everyone would probably have something to say about it. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say that I, I will support it. I would prefer an hour. But I also would like to bring up that I think that we need, I would like to say, within this timeframe of having more community conversation, that we plan on for, at least minimum for, community meetings where we can go out and have an open conversation with question answers. Since this is a meeting of the council to do our business, I think we need to, in order to go out into our community more, have, I know we've done it in the past, I would suggest that we do that, too. So with that, I'm voting yes.
All right. Thanks, Councilmember Boson.
Boss?
Uh, yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Did he say yes? Westegard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Uh, well, I'd also like to make a few comments before I vote. What, excuse me. One, I, I agree with Connie. I think we, we should open this up for, for an hour, at least an hour. There are several ways we could do it. We could make it two minutes for each speaker, allow up to thirty. Three minutes for each speaker. Either one, I think, would be an improvement from, from these rules. I, I will say, I think this is a step in the right direction, allowing an additional ten minutes and being clear about the two-minute block for, for each speaker and providing those two minutes for anyone who signs up. So you always know that you will get that, at least two minutes. I'm not prepared to vote for this tonight unless we make some changes. I'm concerned about, and not changes necessarily going forward. I've said what I think should happen in the future. But I'm concerned about the fact that we've made this change after folks had signed up. And so there are sixty-seven people signed up to speak tonight. I'd like to see all of them get to speak tonight. And I'd be happy to vote for this if the council was willing to go to the two minutes for the first twenty speakers and then give the remaining speakers the thirty seconds they would have received under the existing rules. And that way, we can start with a clear list from, from meetings going forward. So, so that we're not, because with this rule change, we've essentially, without folks knowing it, signed them up to speak for the next three meetings. So I would prefer that. And if council is, wants, wants a consensus, that's what it would take to get my vote. Otherwise, otherwise, I would be a no vote.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's six yes. Mandelbaum?
Yes, I said no. No.
And just to let the record show, for me, I have no problem speaking to any member of the community, whether that be one-on-one, whether that be at any neighborhood meetings that I regularly would attend, pre-COVID and now after COVID. So plenty of time to be able to hear all of our citizens and their concerns, whether emails or direct conversations. So this isn't where it's going to stop, obviously. This is just for us to be able to obviously conduct some, some different business in the way that it's been doing and give everyone a fair shot to, to get more than the amount of time that they've been getting recently with the amount of folks that have been signed up.
Sorry. All right. The item passes six to one. Let's move on. Our next item now is approving the, the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Uh, hang on one second. The consent agenda, item seventeen, was amended. There's a name correction. And in the regular agenda items, forty-seven through fifty-six, item fifty was amended and added more petitions. All right. I think that's it. And the item's been moved, right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 The opposition? Hearing none. Item passes. Take this now to approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through forty-six. Item, item fifty, now that's on the regular, but no, item four C, Councilmember Gatto is, has a conflict of interest. And so we'll be abstaining from that vote, I think. Right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other?
I'll move the rest. I'll move item three.
Okay. Item three has been moved. We'll ask the members of the public if they have any items. Okay. It looks like we have one. Jalen? Tell us what item you would like.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to request item number forty-one and forty-four be pulled out of the agenda. Those are both in reference to the police department getting money and equipment, tablets, those type of things. I think those need to be discussed with the community at large. I also think that the vote that y'all just took for the speaking time was abhorrent and should not have happened. You all should be ashamed.
All right. You said forty-one and forty-four?
Correct.
Okay. Item forty-one is the Homeland Security Grant Award on the Weapons of Mass Destruction Task Force. And item forty-four is purchases from a, a group. And probably D was the one he was referring to. Would any, anybody want to move on that one? Hang on. It looks like we have Bridget. Bridget, you have an item?
Bridget?
Uh, can everybody hear me?
Bridget, you're breaking up a little bit.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, barely. Go ahead.
I would like to request that items forty-one and forty-four be polled. You guys seem a little slow on the uptake, so I don't know if you've heard, but Des Moines was ranked sixth in the nation today for police brutality, per, I think, every one hundred thousand residents. So I don't want to give the people doing the police brutality more equipment with which to do police brutality. Was that clear?
Yep. Forty-one and forty-four. Denver?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Which item would you like?
So I would like to poll forty-one and forty-four. I'm not really sure why officers need fourteen Panasonic Tough Book brand ruggedized tablets for use in police vehicles when they already have laptops, I'm pretty sure, right? Isn't it illegal in Iowa to use your phone? Also, I think the vote you guys did was bogus. You should let everyone speak.
Okay. Emily?
This is Reverend Emily Ewing. They/them pronouns. I would like, in addition to items forty-one and forty-four, I would like item number six, E, the Whitmer Park Playground. It's unclear to me if there is a plan for the play, for the bathrooms in the playground to be both accessible and gender neutral so that everyone in Des Moines can use them. As far as items forty-one and forty-four are concerned, I think we need to be restricting the funds to a racist the funds to a racist and violent police department and not increasing the funds and continuing to give them funds as if they were doing the right thing, which they have again and again and again not been doing. They've been being racist, they've been being violent, and you all are supporting them and complicit in that.
Uh, that's it, um, it sounds like we did get the input, um, from the general public on those, on forty-one, forty-four, and six E.
Six E, Mayor, we're setting a date, six E, we're setting a date of hearing, uh, so we will have discussion on that one. I'll move the rest of the remaining items as they were.
All right. Would you poll the council on that, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Takes us to, um, ordinances that completes the consent agenda, uh, first consideration, uh, item forty-seven is amending chapter one fourteen of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows, council communication number twenty-one dash two-eleven. A is a loading zone restriction on Mulberry Street between Falcon Drive and Thirteenth Street, B is a parking restriction, East Watrous Avenue between Southeast Thirteenth Street and Southeast Fourteenth Street, C is a parking restriction, Burlington Terrace between Sixteenth Street and Chautauqua Parkway, and D is a parking restriction, um, on East Titus Avenue between Southeast Thirty-first Street and Southeast Thirty-second Street, uh, Southeast Thirty-first Street between East Titus Avenue and East Spring Street. Uh, council, any comments on forty-seven regarding the changing of chapter one fourteen?
I'd be happy to move item forty-seven, A, B, C, and D, uh, and if there's no discussion, uh, pursuant to council rules, I'd be happy to, uh, move to waive the second and third reading as well.
Okay, motion's been made, any other discussion? I'm sorry, okay Connie, go ahead.
Sir, I had a gentleman, uh, contact me about the East Titus Avenue, and, um, if we could have some, uh, information to why that was being done, uh, so, there was somebody on that street that wasn't in agreement, so I don't know whether we should waive the readings at this point, uh, to get better clarity for them, I just heard this late this afternoon.
Connie, I've had discussions with them also, uh, two of the ones that are probably most effective are the ones, they're on a curve on East Titus.
Let's see if we can get Steve Neighbors on, give us a little, uh, quick background.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Steve?
Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Steve Neighbors, City Engineer, so actually a, uh, a resident expressed concern about parked vehicles on East Titus between Southeast Thirty-first and Southeast Thirty-second, uh, and when, uh, staff, uh, went out there to review the site, uh, based on the field review, uh, based on the speed limit, street width, and the curves, uh, our recommendation is to remove the parking, uh, within the curves, so it's, uh, it, because it's brought to our attention, because of being a safety issue, uh, staff, staff is recommending this parking restriction.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Any other questions on this item?
Connie, do you, do you want?
I think we could go ahead, if it's a, if it is a safety issue, I think, uh, I think that we should probably just go ahead at this point.
All right, we've got a motion.
I think Carl's hand is up.
Carl, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, um, has this been before the Transportation Safety Committee? Have these, um, amendment, or proposed amendments been before them?
Uh, council, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Steve Neighbors, City Engineer, so when it's a safety issue, we don't, there's nothing to, we do not bring those issues to Transportation Safety Committee, the ones that are brought to Transportation Safety Committee are, in terms of parking, uh, risk concerns, are where, uh, uh, there isn't a safety issue, but it's, uh, a residence request, uh, parking to be, uh, removed or restricted, and the, uh, uh, there's a petition process, and then, then they're brought before Transportation Safety Committee.
Steve, thanks for clarifying that, thank you.
All right, um, seeing no more hands up at the moment, let's, uh, go ahead and poll the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
No.
Your Honor, that's six yes, one no, motion carries.
All right, um, it is four fifty, let's, uh, take a quick, uh, ten-minute recess. All right, it's, uh, five o'clock, it's time to begin our hearings, uh, item forty-nine is our first item, but, uh, again, uh, this evening, uh, we have four zoning items, these are items forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, we also have four, uh, public improvement hearings, uh, as a reminder, for the zoning items only, uh, again, those are items forty-nine through fifty-two, uh, we will hear from the parties of interest first, and then the general public, the parties in interest, uh, only the applicant, uh, for the rezoning, and those persons living within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the property to be rezoned, uh, to whom the city has sent, uh, notices, uh, will be, uh, noticed as parties in interest, after all the parties in interest have commented, we're going to open it up to any member of the public, uh, for germane comments, uh, to that item, and to aid the city clerk in calling on the parties in interest, I'm going to ask that everyone else, don't raise your hand, uh, on the Zoom call unless you are the zoning applicant or live within that two-hundred-and-fifty feet and received a mailed notice for the rezoning, anyone who raises their hand before that, um, uh, will be compared to the mailed list, and if you aren't on it, you'll be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting, so please, we ask, uh, wait until I call on the general public, especially for the zoning items, or you will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting if, uh, you raise your hand and, and, uh, you get on too soon. Uh, after all the parties in interest, uh, have been called upon, the general, uh, public comment, uh, again, they will be called upon, and one minute per person, uh, and a maximum of seven minutes, uh, input on those, uh, zoning items. For the remainder of the hearings this evening, any person, uh, may make germane comments at not exceed, again, one moment, one minute, uh, per person, to a maximum of five minutes, uh, per hearing item. Uh, as a reminder, on the public improvements hearings, only comments as to the plans, the specifications, the form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate, and the low bidder designation are going to be considered germane, all other comments will be considered non-germane. So let's go ahead and, uh, get started, again, item forty-nine, item forty-nine is on a request from Oscar Enrique Zentento, um, to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow, tomorrow to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow, tomorrow future land use classification for twenty-three fifty-four East Grand Avenue, from neighborhood mixed use to community mixed use district, and to rezone from MX-one mixed-use district to MX-three mixed-use district, to allow ongoing operation of a minor vehicle maintenance repair use on the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial, and we need to choose either alternative A or B.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a brief comment?
Yes.
Real quick, before we get started. So I go back in my emails, we've been working on this property since 2016. I have emails back from them. It's been presented to the Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association meeting, they were very supportive of this property. It's been a commercial property since nineteen fifty, or before that. I guess what I would do is, is I would move to continue this, so we can work with the applicants and see, I need to see, and the staff need to see, how they're going to bring the property in conformance to our current code, and before we would send them to the Board of Adjustment or something like that. If we can rezone it and send it to, and get it updated in some ways that would be beneficial to the neighborhood, I'd like to see that, instead of just sending them to the Board of Adjustment. Being it's been this property for so long, but we need a little bit of time to do that, so I'll move just to continue this item. Yeah, I think that's B, alternative B, isn't it? My thanks.
Alternative B would be to direct legal in the city manager's office to actually approve the item. I think you just want to make a motion to continue the item.
Yeah, I want to make a motion to continue. I didn't, I didn't, I don't have A and B. When it comes out on Thursday in the print it, A and B doesn't show up for some reason, so it's slightly confusing. I can't, I can't imagine how confusing it is for the public also, but let's, let's, I'll move to continue forty-nine.
All right, are there any parties in interest? Who would like to speak? Do we ask parties in interest on continuance? Yeah. I see none. So I would guess that the, the parties of interest are okay with the continuance.
Yeah, they emailed me this morning, Mayor.
Okay. So do we need to have public comment on a continuous? Yeah, public comment will be available on the continued hearing. And when are you going to continue it to, Joe, the next, next meeting?
Um, why don't we continue it to June fourteenth? That'll give us a month. That'll give us a little bit more time, if that's okay with, with staff and, and legal.
Yep, I think we're good with that.
All right, we'll continue it to June fourteenth.
The motion is continued to June fourteenth. Item forty-nine, would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westegard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Takes us to item fifty. Item fifty is on a request from Fairway Stores for property at twenty-seven twenty-three forty-first, to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow future land use classification from low-density residential within a neighborhood node to community mixed use within neighborhood node, and to rezone from N-four neighborhood district to a limited MX-three mixed-use district to allow off-site parking and access to be developed in conjunction with a limited retail sales use redevelopment of the property at twenty-seven sixteen Beaver Avenue. The planning and zoning on this one recommends denial, and we have been asked to choose alternative A or B. Counsel, any quick comments?
I'll be talking afterwards, but I'm going to be kind of excited to hear the public input.
Okay. Let's go ahead and ask, are there any parties of interest that are on the meeting?
Fairway is on the line, and they're going to share their screen, Your Honor.
Okay, let's let them go ahead and do that.
Hi there, everyone. Kobe Pritchard with Fairway, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here, give me one sec. Oh, when I try, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay, just a moment, I'll get you clear.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and do so now.
Okay, Kobe, I think you're muted.
Is that showing up for everybody? Sorry about that.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, well, I'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of City Council. Like I said, my name's Kobe Pritchard, I am an attorney with Fairway. Our corporate office is located at seven-one-five Eighth Street, Boone, Iowa, zip code five-zero-zero-three-six. Just as a quick introduction, with me on today's call, I have Scott Kenny, who's a vice president and a member of our officer team. And then we also have Tim West, who is our architect for, and he works for Snyder and Associates, so those two will be available to walk us through any questions, or they might even add some input here, once I kind of gave a little introduction. And I am also supposed to send my apologies from Garrett Picklap, who couldn't make it, he had some, some family things going on, so he wanted to make sure and let, let you all know, so. With that, first, I just wanted to send, or at least say a quick thank you to the city of Des Moines as a whole. We've been working through this project, what's coming up on, just about a year now, and we really appreciate kind of the comments and just the process that we've gone through to kind of bring us to this point. And as you'll see from these slides, I thought at first it'd be best, I know everybody in Des Moines has a really good idea of who, who Fairway is, as we're well-known in the metro, but I just kind of wanted to provide a brief overview of Fairway as a whole, and then I'll kind of dive into specifics on the Beverdale project and what brought us here today. So, real quick, I'll run through kind of Fairway and just a high-level overview of, of where we are as a company, I just thought there's some value there. Okay, so as you all know, Fairway's a growing Midwest grocery company, we operate in Iowa, Illinois, Minnesota, Nebraska, South Dakota, and just recently Missouri, where we opened up a meat market just last year. We've been open up, open since nineteen thirty-eight, coming up on eighty-three years with a hundred-and-twenty-six store locations, and four of those being a meat market, which is obviously specific to what we're going to talk about. And as most know, Fairway's a generation, fourth-generation family-owned business, and we currently have over twelve thousand employees. And just for conceptual purposes, I thought there'd be some value to show some of our other meat markets, just to kind of offer some perspective on, on what we're wanting to do with this location. And with that, I wanted to show our first location that we opened. This is Omaha, where we opened up our first location in two thousand and twelve, and this kind of shows an exterior rendering. Obviously, the Beverdale project is specific to kind of Des Moines city standards, but showing this, I just felt like there, there can kind of give you at least a high-level overview of what we're planning to do here. So this shows you kind of at least some of the brick that we're planning on doing, and then this shows an exterior in Lincoln, which is a follow-up to Omaha, and also kind of showing our, our concept. Next, I'll just show some quick interior pictures, also just kind of adding to what we plan the inside to at least conceptually look like with this meat market concept. And then one more interior to kind of show how this differs from the full-service grocery stores you guys see in the metro, hopefully often. So with that, showing kind of a little bit more perspective, I was going to jump into Beverdale specifically. So, conceptually, again, this is the rendering that we are working towards at this location. I'm just going to jump into the next one, too. And obviously, our goal here is the Beverdale brick, trying to fit into the Beverdale neighborhood the best we can, while gathering feedback and putting together this concept, which is going to be a seventy-seven-hundred-square-foot meat market. We're going to be offering prepared foods with some walk-up lunch options, and also have our ancillary, ancillary grocery items to kind of support that one-stop-shop concept for the Fairway Meat Market. And jumping to our site plan specifically, sorry, it's a little blurry. I figured I'd put this up first to kind of show specifically what we're talking about today, which is obviously the adjacent residential parcel. So first, I wanted to touch on kind of Fairway and Beverdale in general. Fairway has been considering Beverdale, what I've been told is, is well more than a decade now. We've kind of been just looking for that right opportunity to, that would allow us to serve as not only a neighbor, or an anchor to the neighborhood, but also at a prominent location, where, while doing the right thing in a neighborhood that we feel is respected and also very traditional, being the Beverdale neighborhood. And when this location was brought to Fairway, it honestly just checked those boxes on what we thought, and the timing also couldn't be better, because now, at this point, we do have our meat market and smaller grocery concept, which we feel fits even better with the Beverdale neighborhood. So, those two combination of things, kind of, we felt this was the perfect fit, and over this past year, as we've worked hard with these neighbors, residents, businesses, the Beverdale Neighborhood Association, we've been trying to work hard with kind of balancing all these interests to bring about the goal of bringing a friendly, walkable, bike-friendly neighborhood grocery store, and one that also would, as you know, be closed on Sundays, and this location would never be opened after nine PM. So with that said, also over the past year, as we started to look at this site plan specifically, some things kind of changed as we got through the process. Some functionality issues came up, which has brought us to kind of where we are today, where we are requesting to add a residential property to our development, which we all know, the big issue kind of is the access point off of Forty-first Place, which is considered a residential road. So that change, which was kind of a last-case scenario prospect for us, which has just recently happened, we wanted to kind of emphasize what, what we've done and what we're continuing to do to alleviate the concerns of the people that are directly affected by the change in, in this site plan, being the access point on Forty-first. And what we've done so far, first, when working with traffic and transportation in the city of Des Moines, we wanted to first push that, that access point as far north as possible. So, and what you're looking at, that's seventy feet to Urbendale, so we tried to push that up as far as we can to, or as far as that the city would allow us. And then, if you notice from this landscaping plan, we, we added additional landscaping with trees, shrubs, bushes, and a privacy fence, which will surround this access point, trying the best we can to minimize the disruption to those neighbors. So with all that said, even with these changes, our main goal throughout this process has been to try to be the best neighbor we can be. And even though we're here today asking for the rezone, my message to the neighbors as we've gone through this year-long process is, if we get past this point tonight, we fully plan on to continue looking at ways to improve this access point, because as we continue on, get farther down the process, more ideas might come up. So my message there is, we just want to make sure we're, you guys know, we are an open book on trying to figure out how else we can improve that area. So, I'm going to try to wrap it up. With all that said, and as we've worked through all these issues, there's been a lot of interest, a lot of different personalities, interests, and concerns that have been brought to the table. And we've tried to, most importantly, look at the negative, but with the negative and how little there was, we also wanted to make sure we touch on, you know, the overwhelming amount of support that we did receive on kind of our vision, and a way we can revitalize this corner. And so to list out kind of what we've heard from, or at least discussed through, we've had Des Moines city staff, obviously, before planning and zoning, which included traffic and transportation, with their recommendation of approval, the Beverdale Neighborhood Association, who we worked through, worked with throughout the process, with their board of directors authoring a resolution of support, the Des Moines Partnership, the Des Moines West Side Chamber of Commerce, a member of the Polk County Supervisors, Iowa Business Council, and countless residents and businesses, which is great, great to hear, because we do believe in this project. And to wrap this up, I think everyone can agree that it's, this site is challenging. I mean, we've been working on it for quite some time with, with what we hope to invest in, in Beverdale. And we strongly feel that this route and what we're bringing forward is the best way of balance all these interests we've heard and tried to put together. And we feel that this route would allow us to best serve Beverdale, and hopefully for, for decades to come, and that's, that's our hope. So, with that, I just wanted to say thank you. Scott, Tim, and I are here to answer any questions, and I think, Mr. Kenny, if, council members, if you're okay with it, I think he was going to jump on and add a couple remarks.
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
Can you have him raise your, raise his hand, so I can see him?
Yeah. Mr. Kenny, would you raise your hand? All right.
Hey, hopefully you can hear me now.
I think we can hear you now.
Everything Kobe said was stated very nicely. I'd just like to add emphasis to two quick points. One, from an operational standpoint, obtaining the additional access point is an important part of this overall project. And two, as an officer of this company and fourth-generation family-owned business, I can tell you that we want to be good neighbors to the businesses and the people in the neighborhood, and we will work hard to minimize any impact of our new location. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Scott. I'll now ask, and let's, counsel, any questions that we have of Fairway? And then we'll get a, any other parties in interest. I think I saw one other person's hand up. Counsel, any? All right, let's ask for the other party in interest. I believe Susan Wedeman.
This is Susan White, can you hear me?
Yes.
I live at two-seven-one-five Forty-first Place. And while the presentation that Kobe gave was great, and I think we can all agree, Fairway would be a wonderful addition to our neighborhood, however, the rezoning of this property at two-seven-two-three forty-first place is completely unnecessary at this point in time. The Fairway can build and do everything they need to do with the existing property they have, without needing to remove a house, a historic house from the neighborhood, as well as impacting our residential street. I know we are a small street, however, we still are here a part of the community. In addition, I feel this sets a, a bad precedent, because who's to say, down, two years down the road, Fairway says, you know, we could really use some additional parking, and we want to purchase the next house over and tear it down to add parking? Or who's to say, the other businesses within, that are currently existing in the, in the area, I know there's a, already a parking shortage, and they say, hey, we could really use some additional parking, let's look into purchasing the houses behind us to tear those down and add it parking. Where is the line going to be drawn to stop this urban creep? That is all I have, thank you.
All right, Teresa Harold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council.
I just, I collected my thoughts, so I'm just going to, I'm going to read them, but I'll be quick about it. Last Thursday, I consulted a realtor about selling my home, my investment of almost 10 years. I need to be ready for any eventuality, and if the access of 41st Place is allowed to move forward, I'll be looking to sell my house before the property value drops, before my quiet corner lot becomes part of the business district, before the constant traffic from that access decreases my safety and ability to move freely and out of my property. Yes, I have a very vested interest in this decision, but it's bigger than me. It's bigger than 41st Place. There's been a carefully crafted campaign to control the flow of information from the new Fairway site plan. My neighbors and I have walked the neighborhood. We've spoken with our neighbors and shown them the change in the site plan. The greater majority of the neighbors with whom we've spoken were in favor of Fairway, but not in the change in plan. The most echoed comment was how the increase in traffic will significantly decrease the safety in our walkable part of our neighborhood. Residents outside of Beverdale are watching as well. They realize that if it could happen in our neighborhood, it could happen in theirs. I know it's not going to, I know there's a lot going on in our city, and I know that your job is not easy. But this vote can be easy. People have tried to make it hard, they've tried to make it messy, they've tried to distract you from the real issue. But this isn't about popularity, what Beverdale wants. If the neighborhood opinion had been wanted, there would have been a greater effort to inform them. This isn't about Fairway. They have all they need to complete their project within the space they've already purchased, should they choose to do so. This vote doesn't have to be hard. Will you support your Planning and Zoning Commissioner's resounding decision against the rezoning of 272341 Place? You have confidence in their ability to do the job that you have asked them to do. Personally, I'm going to, I am asking you to consider if you would like this access in front of your house. And if you wouldn't welcome it, then please don't condemn us to it. As a resident of the city of Des Moines, I am asking us to show your support of your Commissioner's conclusion. Please uphold their decision to deny this rezoning. Thank you.
Brandusa? Are you on? Brandusa Vilka?
Mayor, I have my neighbor Sherelle Swart here.
Okay, who's speaking?
Can you hear me?
Yes, who do we have now? Is this Brandusa? Hello? Could you state your name, please?
Yes, this is Brandusa Velika, and I live at 272141 Place, the property that is located south of the property in question.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry about the technical difficulties. Zoom is hard, even a year into the pandemic. I just wanted to speak, you know, and pretty much, nobody's going to, I don't think you're going to hear something that you haven't heard before regarding this project. I just want to speak in support of the neighbors that have spoken before, and just reiterate the fact that we do believe that this, we, as in most of the residents of the street, believe that the rezoning of the corner property is unnecessary and almost a little bit unreasonable. None of the businesses that serve the Beverdale neighborhood have made such a request in the, you know, past 15 years that I've been around Beverdale. I think it's unfair to ask the neighborhood to change so they can fit the market within it. You know, it would be a little bit more reasonable if they tried to adjust to the neighborhood, such as it is, with bike lanes and pedestrians and, you know, the degree of walkability that we enjoy here. I also think that it's unfair to ask, you know, the residents of one street to bury, you know, to carry most of the burden. We all are in favor of the project. We all are in favor and enthusiastic about Fairway building a meat market here. And I think a first sign of goodwill, you know, and a first proof that they do intend to be good neighbors, would be to just try to make it work within the space that they have. That's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
All right. Teresa, did you say you had Cheryl Swart with you? All right, let's move on to Daniel Johansson.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm also going to speak in support of the P&amp;Z recommendation to deny the rezoning. I'll be reiterating some of the points that have already been made by some neighbors. But I live on 42nd Street. My family and I go past this property many times, you know, very close to the Beverdale Neighborhood Business District, and do a lot of biking along the bike trail and, or bike lane that goes past this property, and use the sidewalk as well. So my concerns, you know, I can see what the neighbors on 41st Place, what their concerns are and why they have those, and I completely back them up on those. I also want to add my thoughts as someone who doesn't live on 41st, I live on 42nd, but within that 250-foot radius, and would also be negatively affected. I've, I heard, council members have told me that they've gotten a lot of support for Fairway, and that I understand, because I also support Fairway. I grew up shopping in Fairway stores in little towns where I'm from. And I think it'd be a good addition to the neighborhood. I don't think that we need to expand the business district to do it, especially just for a parking lot. I've heard on the Beverdale Neighborhood Association meeting that this isn't about parking, yet I noticed there are a lot more parking spots in the revised plan. That could have been landscaping if it wasn't about parking. I think they're giving away the game. They're saying it's something about accesses when they put parking lot expansion in on 1930s, 1920s. Beverdale home that needs to be demolished to make a parking lot. The Fairway should have known, they have a real estate lawyer, right? They should know that the city has codes saying you get one access per primary street. There's an alley there, it has to be that alley, that's what they get. They've never shown a plan that complies. They've shown a plan that had two accesses. The original rezoning showed a sketch showing two accesses on Urbendale. That's clearly not going to be allowed. Now their argument is, well, we weren't allowed to do this, so now we have to buy another property to make our traffic work. I don't see how that's the city's problem. That sounds like it's Fairway's problem. If they weren't aware of this requirement, they should have worked something out. They didn't. They went ahead with rezoning of the original property, got it approved, and now we're coming back with this. It's not conducive to safety. All this does is shift the second, it shifts the second access over to 41st Place. So people biking along that bike lane will still have two conflict points, which is the reason for having that in the code, to avoid that kind of thing. So we're just allowing them to go get around it on a technicality. And the technicality costs the neighborhood on 41st, all that additional traffic. It costs a historic home in Beverdale. And to me, it's even worse than the original plan. So P&amp;Z seemed to have understood the situation pretty clearly. So overwhelming vote to not allow this. I think it would be a horrible precedence to set for the council to overrule them today. If a developer can just use these kind of tactics to get around clearly stated things in code, every developer is going to be coming to you, asking for all kinds of unsafe, unconstructive changes in the future to plans. So I think it's, I think, like Teresa said, it's an easy vote. You, P&amp;Z, they're the experts. Just take what they said, and we'll move forward. And get a Fairway in the neighborhood that everybody wants on a property that's appropriate for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Again, Teresa Harold, you said you had Cheryl Swart on your phone.
Hi, this is Sherelle Swart, and I live at 272841 Place. I live directly across from the house that Fairway would like to purchase. And I have lived at that location since 1964, which is 57 years. And in all that time, I've seen a lot of changes to the Beverdale neighborhoods and the shopping area and the businesses that have come and gone, and change is good. However, this change that I'm seeing is very drastic. Wanting to have an access point into a residential area just does not seem like a good idea. And Fairway says it wants to be a good neighbor, but a good neighbor would not come into our neighborhood and purchase an historic Beverdale brick home, something Beverdale is known for, and tear it down so that they can have a few extra parking places and a fourth access point. They have, they have enough access points. They have Beaver, they have Urbendale, and they have the alley. It doesn't seem like that that extra access point is necessary. I will be right across the street from people who are trying to get in and out of the store. And it just seems like a pretty drastic move. When they purchased the property, they obviously purchased it knowing that what they had, and then decided to change it along the way. And I just think that, like everyone else has said, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not feel that it should be rezoned. It was an 11 to 2 vote. And I would ask that the city council and Mr. Mayor, that you uphold their vote and keep our neighborhood a residential neighborhood, not part of the business district. Thank you.
All right. In terms of the, Madam Clerk, the registered people, parties in interest, that looks like that's... So let's go ahead and open it up to see if there's any germane comments from the general public. And these will, these will be one minute per person to speak in a maximum of seven minutes. All right, let's, I see an individual here, Chris Coleman. So your hand up.
Sorry, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for your service. I sent a note earlier from my employer that's a neighbor of the proposed Fairway. I'd like to take just a second to speak personally. I have a lot of history in the neighborhood. In 1989, I was co-chair of the neighborhood plan, one of the first that the city did, and evolved again in 2013. I'll read you an important line from that. Beverdale residents see the neighborhood's top opportunities as potential for commercial expansion. I think it's always been on the mind of the neighborhood that the commercial district has to thrive, and sometimes that means expansion. And every other time we've had this opportunity, it was faced with development that was not in compliance with the rest of the neighborhood, the size and scope of the development. This Fairway store is perfect for Beverdale. It's a destination retail like we want to build out in many areas of the state.
All right, Adam Kellin. Adam?
Hello, my name is Adam Kellin, and I use he/him pronouns. Yeah, so we've been watching this project for a bit, this Fairway, as it has unfolded. Back in one of the earlier versions of this, it became clear that Fairway was trying to get kind of a blank check for zoning, for any potential thing they might do. And I think now we're seeing why they were trying to get kind of an all-clear for any potential changes they might make. I think that it's really a shame that a business that says they're here to try to, you know, fit into the neighborhood or whatever, is talking about tearing down a house. I can't think of really a better way to show that you don't actually want to fit in and support neighbors. And I just think it's a shame. I think this should have been more harshly declined than it already has, and I hope the council votes against it today.
Peyton Shoemaker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just, I more had a question for Kobe, the Fairway person. I'm really just wondering, you know, you're saying that you want to fit into the neighborhood. I guess it's a question for Fairway in general. You're saying you want to fit into the neighborhood and have all this, these great plans of having your storefront look like a Beverdale brick, and then you're tearing down a Beverdale brick in order to move into the neighborhood. So I'm just wondering how that makes sense to you? Like, you're not fitting into the neighborhood when you're literally like skinning a house and like taking the Beverdale brick aesthetic and just plastering it onto your storefront. You're literally just tearing down history, tearing down a house to get a parking lot. And I really don't think that it's necessary, and I think that council should vote against this, and listen to the public who actually are saying what they want, and just listen.
Indira Shoemaker.
Hi, my name is Indira Shoemaker, and I live on 51st Street. I went to this corner, and I spoke to some of the people who live here, some of the people who are against this rezoning. And I have seen this house, I know Carl Boss, you saw it too. It would be a drastic change to the landscape of the neighborhood to tear this house down. Something I want to point out, Fairway said that they want to look like a Beverdale brick, but they, and they have been around since 1938. This is a Beverdale brick that has been around since 1938, and they are asking to tear it down, a house that could house somebody in this neighborhood. This is a tight-knit community where everybody knows everybody on their street, and we're literally tearing it apart. People are saying that they're going to move. Property values are going to go down. It's going to be hurting people. And this is also an area where people are walking constantly. I know, because I've been around here my entire life. People are walking around on all these side streets and back streets, and that is going to completely change with this kind of traffic. There was an amended traffic study that was not included in the Planning and Zoning meeting that would put 200-plus people per day on this small side street. That can't happen.
Okay, Enis Maxwell.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good, I'm Max Ennis. Thanks, everyone, for letting me speak. I'm going to speak in favor of this Fairway development. I personally love living next to a grocery store. I live down on Cord Avenue. I eventually would like to move to a slightly quieter neighborhood, but still have access to walkable commercial areas, including, and most especially groceries, which are, you know, a relatively quotidian purchase. The, and I think that to elevate the voice of people who are currently living there over, you know, the hundreds of thousands of people that live in the Des Moines metro who would like access, walkable access to groceries, is disingenuous. And so I hope that the city goes forward with this rezoning. Thank you. is, is disingenuous. And so I, I hope that the city goes forward with this rezoning. Thank you.
Adam Plague.
Thank you, Adam Plague. I live about three blocks west of the proposed rezoning site. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed site plan. I understand very well redevelopment projects are very hard and I think we're hearing some of that reason here tonight. But it's a very small parcel and there's challenges that come with that. But we've seen other redevelopment projects in Beaverdale fail. You don't have to look very far, just up to Douglas and Beaver of an old gas station that hasn't redeveloped for years. This is such a great opportunity and a great asset for the neighborhood. Brick building right up along the curb. Everyone I've spoke to in the neighborhood is in support of it. And driving Sheridan quite frequently, folks will not be going south on 41st. They're going to be going north on the Beaver, or north under Urbendale. And then turning south on Beaver, just because Sheridan's very difficult to turn south off of. Thank you.
Dave Buzik.
Mr. Mayor and Council, can you hear?
Yes.
Hi, Dave Buzik, 2922 37th Street, a Beaverdale resident since about 1979. A couple of points I think have not been raised and that is, although I, I understand, sorry, let me turn that off. I understand the concerns of the neighbors. This kind of access point exists all over the city. Just look right across Beaver Avenue and Saints or it's, seemed to be a successor in Green State Credit Union. They exit onto Fagan, but it goes, the traffic goes right onto Beaver. It doesn't go down the residential parts of that street and, and they're all over. I would point out to Mr. Carwash up at Merle Hay and Ovid. Again, the only exit is onto Ovid, but the traffic goes right onto Merle Hay. Second point, Fairway made pretty clear to the BNA board that if it doesn't get this access point, it's going to have to seriously reconsider this project. And I think that that would be a, a real tragedy. I think there are thousands and thousands of people in Beaverdale that want this. And thirdly, I would say if it, if it fails because of this, any retailer that would come in there is going to have the exact same.
All right. That concludes our seven minute maximum. I would like to now open it up to council to have their comments. Bill, do you want to start or would you like to conclude?
No, I, I would be happy to start, Mayor. And I'll lead it off. I've been hanging on to this project now for about a year. They first approached a few of us in the Beaverdale area in June of last year. And we literally were jumping out of our seats. It was such a great plan for an area that where US Bank used to be. And that's been going on now three years of vacancy. And here we got something with a pretty vibrant business plan, something that fits in great with the neighborhood. This has just been something like Dave Buzik and Adam pointed out, it's the buzz of Beaverdale without a doubt. So the first thing I want to do is, is address some of the issues for the, for the homeowners on 41st Place. And, you know, obviously that is a big concern. You got to make sure that Fairway can fit in with the kind of business model that's going to be mutually beneficial. I can, I'm going to look and reference the Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh on Merle Hay and Hickman as an example. Fairway, when Fairway approached me, I first thought of this over here with Hy-Vee and Hy-Vee had the same issues. They wanted to put an entrance off of Hickman onto 59th Street. And all of the same concerns that the 41st Place residents said came out from the 59th Street residents. That is too much traffic, more traffic than it can handle. 59th Street would become a raceway. People won't use the Merle Hay Road. They'll, they'll turn down Sheridan and come up the back way. And this came, this was just about exactly what we're hearing from the 41st Place people. And I can tell you this, it's just a mile and a half away and none of that ever materialized, not a piece of it. When people wanted to turn in off of Hickman onto 59th, it's just like Adam said, you just turn the corner and you're right there. So I'm going to use that going forward, that it's not going to be any traffic that's going to be showing up on 41st Place. It's going to be access and egress. That's what the whole thing's about. There is no benefit to try and go up 41st Place to get to Sheridan and try and take a right or left turn to get to Beaver or 44th Street. Doesn't make any sense. So, I mean, I'm, I'm very particular about how I listen to them. But I have heard the same comments before. So I'm, I'm still very much in favor of going with, with this plan. Now, the other thing, when working with Fairway all this time, was they went to Traffic and Transportation to try and get a median cut. Well, we, we worked and worked and we did the best we could, but Traffic and Transportation did not want to put a median cut on Urbendale so they could access from Urbendale onto the Fairway store. And it's then that the other location came up and they approached them and that's where we are today. In looking at this, we're worried about traffic. I've, I've talked with the Fairway on this. Here's, here's some facts and figures that we can work with. Fairway will be getting, getting three deliveries per week from their store. That'd be true Fairway trucks. And that'll be, it'll be in the morning or in the afternoon. And these deliveries are not going to be to a dock, rather they're going to be off a lift gate and two wheeled into the store. They have other business partners that they work with, where you get like soda, liquor, chips, whatever you want. Those will be delivered four to five times a day, a week, five times a week. And they too will be coming probably mid-morning. So disruption to the neighborhood, delivery trucks will be non-existent. Fairway has also said that when they do put this in, they're going to put a sign up that will say, "Right turn only when you're exiting on 41st Place." That is, you know, going above and beyond what, what Traffic and Transportation has said. So now we get to the, the Plan and Zoning meeting and staff has recommended this, Traffic and Transportation has recommended it. And the Beaverdale Neighborhood Association has given a letter of support. So that's why we are here today. Now, what I will also say, we have such generated buzz in the Beaverdale area. Here are the benefits that Beaverdale is going to see. First of all, it's going to provide jobs and economic benefit to just about everybody in that Beaverdale business. Think, when I go to Fairway, like, oh, there's a coffee shop, I'll stop there. Or there's a florist shop, I'll get some flowers there. There's a Medica pharmacy I can get my prescription filled there. There's places to go get a bite to eat and what else, but I got a great hardware store across the street. Great additions to the... It will become an anchor in the Beaverdale Business District. We don't have that. We have Ace Hardware right now, but as you, as has been pointed out, we always have turnover in businesses and sometimes that's disruptive, sometimes it's not good. Fairway will be here for decades and decades to come. And like Adam pointed out, we've already got one area that, that was very hard to develop down on Beaver and Douglas and, and it's set over 11 years vacant. That, that's not something anything we want. So, you know, as, as we've gone through all this, I would like to make a motion that we choose alternative B, which is to continue this to the May 24th meeting with directions to staff to come back with plans and that will take into consideration any missions or, or benefits or things that we have to change in their application to move forward on this. So that's my motion, alternative B, and that's also recommended by city staff as well. So alternative B is going to be my motion.
Any other council members? Nope. All right. Councilmember Gray has moved alternative B. Is that right?
That's correct, Mayor, to continue to the May 24th meeting and have staff come back with conditions that will make it work with Fairway.
All right, the, the motion is to continue to the May 24th meeting, moved by Councilmember Gray. Would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes, yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, takes us to item 51. Item 51 is on a request from AH EPA Management Company, who's the purchaser to rezone property at 1111 East Army Post Road from CX Mixed Use District to Limited RX2 Mixed Use District to allow construction of a multi-household building intended for seniors aged 55 and above, household living use and allowing residential units on all floors, including the ground floor level. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Steve Beck, the president and CEO of AH EPA Management Company. This requires six votes. Any council members, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, great project. Very, the neighborhood is very supportive of this. We need more senior housing similar to this on, on the, the south side. I would happily move 51A and B.
All right, 51A and B have been moved. Let's quickly ask if there's any parties in interest to this. And again, those are the applicant or those living within 250 feet and have received a notice. I see David DeBoer's hand up. David, did you plan on speaking on this? All right, I guess not. Let's ask if there's any members of the public who would like to speak on item 51. All right, seeing none, we have a motion. Would you poll the council, please?
Tony?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item 52 is on a request from River Point West LLC as the owner for the approval of PUD Final Development Plan slated Gray's Landing located at 400 Southwest 11th Street for the development of 132 unit independent living senior household living dwelling project. Council, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll just say, I, I think this has been a long time coming. And this is, again, like, like Joe was talking, Councilmember Gatto was talking about, this is adding senior housing, particularly in a place we've had a lot of housing be developed in this area, but nothing specifically for, in this, in this, meaning this type of use and, and demographics. So I think this adds to the housing diversity in this downtown neighborhood and I think that's a, a huge positive. And I'm happy to move item 52.
All right, item 52 has been moved. Let's ask, ask if there's any parties in interest who would like to speak on this. Again, that's the applicant for those within 250 feet of the property. I do not see any. Let's ask if there's any members of the general public who would like to make germane comments on this. And again, one minute per speaker. I see Jalen's hand up.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, just speaking on item 52, adding this 132 unit independent senior living project. I think that sounds good and I generally support adding housing in the city. So support this, support adding more public housing just in the city throughout. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, that looks like all the comments. We have a motion. Would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item 53 is the 2122 HMA pavement scarification and resurfacing. Is a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, the engineer's estimate in receiving bids and designating the lowest responsible bidder is Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation. Timothy Malacot is the president, $188,172.40. Council Communication number 21-198 is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Council, any, any comment here?
I'll move 53 and 53A, Your Honor.
All right, 53 and 53A have been moved. Again, we'll open it up for general public, may file objections to the proposed plans or specifications, the contract or estimated cost of the public improvement. And only those kinds of comments are going to be germane. We'll allow one minute per person, five minutes maximum. All right, seeing none, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, next item is item 54. The 2021 sanitary and storm sewer televising program is a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, the engineer's estimate in receiving bids and designating the lowest responsible bidder is Equix Integrity Inc. Michael DeBellic is the president, $467,190. Again, the sanitary and storm sewer televising program. Council, any comment?
I'll be happy to move 54 and 54A.
All right, sorry, Council Communication number 21-194 approving contract and bond is A. So thank you, Connie. It's been moved. Let's open it up. Are there any comments on this regarding the sanitary and storm sewer televising program? Seeing none, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item 55. Item 55 is Close's Creek Storm Sewer Improvements Phase 2A and 2B. Resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, the engineer's estimate in receiving bids and designating the lowest responsible bidder is RW Excavating Solutions, LC. Dan E. Wilson is the managing member, $5,997,160.44. Council Communication number 21-207A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Council, any comments on Close's Creek Storm Sewer Improvements Phase 2A and 2B?
Yes, Mayor, this is right in my wheelhouse. Part of Close's Creek goes right in front of my house. So there is a lot of good things that are happening. This, this is going to be down there on 41st and College. This is gonna be down there on 41st and, uh, College where they're gonna be putting a retention basin in. That's right behind, uh, Gloria Hoffman's house. So she, we approved, uh, right away improvements for her place. I know she's probably listening to this. Uh, this is also gonna take it through that ravine underneath Beaver into Whitmer Park, uh, ravine. And then we're gonna start seeing some big things that will move that flow of water faster than we ever have seen before? And have a retention that'll slow that thing down, uh, where it needs to be. So, um, if, um, we're there in the public, but, uh, I'm awful proud to be, uh, able to, uh, move item 55 and 55A.
All right, thanks, Bill. Um, let's ask if there's any members of the, uh, public who would like to speak on this. Again, this is about the, uh, proposed plans, specifications, contract? Or the estimated cost to improve it, and those are the germane comments that will be considered. Luke, I see your hand up.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so I just question really about this. Um, wanted to know how, uh, you determine that these improvements were necessary? Whether you were able to reach out and get consensus among the public living in that area? I just know, uh, from some experience earlier on in this call that consensus isn't always the most important thing to this council? Given the rule change that was made. Um, also wanted to know, but the 10-minute break you took? Um, immediately after making it so that 47 people couldn't speak tonight?
Okay, do you have any more germane comments to this regarding the contract and the bond and permission?
I guess, I guess I was just, you know, I was hoping to speak tonight. So I was gonna go ahead and take an opportunity to comment.
Thank you. All right, we, um, I think are, are ready to vote. Would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 56 is the Kiasakwa Way Rehabilitation, 9th Street to 19th Street. Resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, the engineer's estimate, receiving bids? And designating the lowest responsible bidder as Inroads LLC. Joseph J. Minnet, uh, is the manager, 1,059,777 dollars and 70 cents. Council Communication number 21 dash 192A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Counsel, any comments here?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm excited to see this project moving forward. Uh, this is gonna repair, uh, a roadway that very much needs it. But also, at the same time, we're gonna be, uh, adding some really important, uh, pedestrian safety, uh, features to, to this section of road as well. Uh, and this is part of the broader Connect Downtown, uh, sort of on the edge of that, that plan. Uh, but it's nice to see when we, we do the repair work, uh, in, in areas that are impacted or adjacent to Connect Downtown. We're keeping, uh, that broader vision in mind as we do that. So I'm happy to move item 56 and 56A.
All right, thank you. Again, uh, any general public comments about the proposed plans or the specifications? Contract or the estimated cost of the improvement? Who, Carl? Carl, did you wanna say something?
Oh, thank you, Mayor County. Yes, the, uh, Hawk, uh, pedestrian crossing will be really important. There is a lot more pedestrian traffic in this area. And I, I think that as we work down, um, south on Kiasakwa? As, um, additional floors are built out in the mainframe building? We may need to consider an additional Hawk crossing there as people figure out, uh, uh, where they can park and go to, to mainframe. So, yes, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
All right, uh, let's go ahead and open it up. Um, Payton, I see your hand up.
Hi, um, yeah, I just wanted to talk about this item. Um, I had some objections to file about the proposed plans, specifications, contract, or estimated cost of the public improvement. Um, I just wanted to, you know, file my objection to that and also just waste your time and take as much time as I can. Uh, because you clearly don't wanna listen to the public, so I'm just gonna take all the time that I can talking about contract. Cost of the public.
Let's move on to Endura, please.
Hi, this is Endure Shoemaker, and I just wanna say this isn't anything personal about anybody who's supporting this, um, who's supporting the Kiasakwa Way Rehabilitation. But the fact that you are silencing 47 people today who had signed up to speak is a little ridiculous. I think like my 27.
Speaker? Brad Wiesemeyer.
Hey, Brad Wiesemeyer here. I use they, them, or he in pronouns. Um, yeah, speaking of item 56. Uh, I just wanted to ask Mayor County if it was you or City Attorney Jeff Lester that started laughing when Luke, uh, mentioned silencing 46 people from speaking tonight?
Okay, next speaker. Kimberly Miles.
Okay, hi, um, you know, um, my name is Kimberly Miles, and I grew up in that neighborhood. And I'm, just now I'm being made aware and attending this meeting. Guess what, guys? They silenced because Kimberly Miles wanted to speak, but I'm gonna stick with 56. My question is, does this have, I haven't seen the plans, but I do know one thing. I sure am getting tired of Goods Park getting chopped up. So is there any chopping in Goods Park involved with this? Cause if it is, I totally object. And were there any minority contractors given an opportunity to get any of this money? If you're coming up in our neighborhood? Thank you.
All right, uh, Steve, are you on? Can you, uh, address whether or not, um, the park is gonna be touched at all? Didn't look like it to me, but, um, could you comment on that, please?
Mayor, members of City Council, uh, Steve Neighbors, City Engineer, uh, yes, confirming that, uh, yeah, this, this project does not, uh, in any way, uh, encroach, uh, or impact Goods Park. It's, uh, rehabilitation of the existing road, uh, fixing the existing pavement. Uh, and then also, uh, as the councilman, uh, Manawal men- mentioned, uh, adding a, uh, improved pedestrian crossing. Uh, um, just, uh, north of Crocker there, uh, for, uh, to, you know, to make pedestrian crossing much safer.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Leah? Leah Pap?
Uh, regarding item 56, Kiasakwa Way Rehabilitation. I just wanna know why you guys are so scared of letting the public speak. Almost a year now, you've been limiting and limiting how we can organize around.
I'm sorry, this doesn't sound like it's in any way related to Kiasakwa Way.
Because we come to these meetings every two weeks.
Thank you. KT Menke?
Um, yeah, the lady earlier, she asked about who, if there were minorities given an opportunity for that. So I was curious about that, if there were any minorities given an opportunity to pick up on, um, taking this project on. Like, do you have a list on who was given the opportunity to take this project? I don't know if you have a list of who was, I don't know what process you go through for this project. Like, if you have a list of people you select to take this project on? Or if, like, you have a file there at City Council on who you select or how you do your bids? I'm not really sure how you go about that, but I'm very curious to have that answer. Can you answer that for us, County?
Uh, we generally put these, uh, out to public bid? And, uh, we receive, uh, um, bids as they review the specifications? And, uh, the bids are open to, um, those that are qualified to do this kind of work? In this case, this Kiasakwa Way Rehabilitation. All right, time's up. Uh, believe we have a motion. Could you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, let's note that it's, uh, 6:14, and that concludes our hearings. It takes us back to, um, the public speaking. Uh, we did have, um, one question that I would like to, uh, just mention, uh, when we are discussing things? We often, uh, give council members a, uh, a moment to explain their vote on a particular issue? And for those that are looking, um, our, our rules for, and procedures for the Des Moines City Council? Um, we, uh, technical and parliamentary, uh, forms are abolished, um, except as specifically required, uh, by the council. Uh, should not use any formal points of parliamentary order. So Roberts Rules, for instance, is not what we follow. So it's points of personal privilege and parliamentary inquiry, uh, or other technical forms. So we've got our own, uh, way that we do and have, uh, long and, and occasionally adjusted. But we have our own rules and procedures. So let's go ahead and, um, start with the communications, uh, from our general public. And our first speaker, uh, is Adam Kellinan. Adam, you're up.
Uh, I'm not first on the list. Sidney is. I need to know why Sidney's not speaking before I do, cause I'm.
Sidney has to be removed, Adam. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I don't know about if everybody in this meeting has signed up to speak before, but when you do, you have to agree to a certain, it's kind of like a legal thing. There's like legal jargon, five or six of them. They tell you what the current council rules are. Um, so the number of people that signed up, 66 people signed up this week, and they agreed to follow these rules. And council said, actually, we're gonna vote to redact the rules that they agreed to when they signed up with. I just think that's worth noting, um, cause it seems legal to me. Maybe it should be, but isn't. Uh, but yeah, 66 people agreed to speak, agreed to speak Thursday night. That was announced, and Friday y'all decided, actually, we don't want 46 of the people to speak. And then today you confirmed that, um, which, yeah, that's pretty messed up. Y'all looked at a list of people and literally crossed people off. You chose who shouldn't be able to speak. Um, yeah, I, I think it's interesting that you're retaliating against us now for the third time by changing the speaking rules, by adding speaking restrictions. Uh, like I said, you've done this three times in the past year. I'd like to see even once you retaliate against people like D M P D that are literally using violence to hurt us? And have been for, I mean, for as long as they've been around, but especially this past year. I've never seen any kind of retaliation like that. Um, as much as speaking time may not be the biggest retaliation of what they deserve. Um, some things I wanna say about the rule changes. One, County keeps saying they in, they expanded the individual overtime. The actual amendment dropped the minutes from three to two. It used to be three minutes, now it's two minutes. That's not expanding it, and they might have added 10 minutes to the end, but that's only by robbing time from the majority. Like, this meeting, they robbed time from 46 people to give some time to 40 people, which still, again, is not what the original time was. And a year ago, it was five minutes. They've made all these changes. It's retaliation to us, retaliation to criticism specifically. So honestly, we don't even have the freedom to, to criticize the government if criticizing the government means we get punished and retaliated against. Um, we also heard these will improve the flow of the meeting. I'm not sure what's wrong with the flow, cause things we say can't really mess up the flow. Um, but things at the beginning where County messed up the voting for the speaking restriction, that is a mess up to the flow. Having a 10-minute gap in the meeting, that is a mess up to the flow. Uh, it's just pretty clear that's not this.
Hey, is it my turn? Did y'all mute Adam, or what's up with that? You didn't, I didn't hear you say time or anything. Hello, is it my turn to speak? Can I get some confirmation? Hello? Josh, can you nod your head if, if you can hear me?
I can, I can hear you, Jalen.
Okay, thank you.
I can hear you.
I can't hear the city clerk.
I believe it would be the mayor to recognize someone, and I don't know if there are technical difficulties or not.
Should I start speaking or wait till the mayor recognizes me? Has my time started? I hope not.
May- maybe we lost the mayor, Jalen. Just hang on a second. There you go.
What, eh, do I go now?
Yes.
All right, I don't know what's going on. Um, hello, that was, uh, pretty fitting, honestly, for that to be the introduction of me speaking? Considering the confusion and the, um, just rule changes and the chaos that y'all, council members, have decided to put upon people in the community? Who are trying to give their input to, uh, better the city. Um, I thought I was gonna have 27 seconds to speak today, and it turns out I get two minutes now. Didn't really have anything planned. I, um, would like to say I'm not a fan at all of this rule change. Uh, I think that it is absolutely ridiculous. I think that it is, once again, the council's attempt to silence the community from having their voices heard? And from speaking out about relevant issues that are happening in their own community. I think every single council member here should be ashamed of themselves. I hope that y'all look yourselves in the mirror and really consider, um, your role in all of this and how you're acting as, uh, supposed elected officials. Um, why run for office if you can't sit through a council meeting that goes more than two hours? Uh, you know, like, what, what, every two weeks? Um, it, it's absolutely ridiculous. Um, and the fact that y'all have now taken 46 people off of this agenda? Um, and what, now they're going to be signed up for the next two meetings? So that means that since I'm speaking at this meeting, I'm not allowed to register to speak until, what, June 28th? At that next meeting, how does that make any sense at all? You don't think there's gonna be any relevant issues that I wanna talk about between now and June 28th? Um, and I'll just say right now, you know, in-person meetings are coming up soon, and I don't know how, um, the council is really going to handle, uh, people who wanna speak out. I don't know if y'all are gonna have armed guards and D M P D in there dragging people out who just wanna have their voices heard when they're getting silenced by the council. You're not gonna have that mute button anymore, uh, County or K. So, um, just know that, um, you know, that y'all are causing this chaos, y'all are causing this confusion. Um, and I wanna know why. Why is it so that y'all can have just an easy, easy life and easy job as council members? So that y'all can just rubber stamp these gentrification deals and these, um, corporate interest deals? Y'all can let Fairway come on here and have a screen share and start talking for damn near 30 minutes? But you can't let people speak for, what, more than seven minutes? Only, you can only divide seven minutes from how many people?
Giada Maurici?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Hope you can hear me. Can you confirm? Okay, thank you. Um, Des Moines is constantly hailed as the top-ranking city, as a great place to live with a competitive workforce that is full of exciting events and opportunities. In the last year, our city has come together in remarkable ways to show our support for black lives and the demands of groups like the Black Liberation Movement. This council's response has been to limit and prohibit public comment. In preparing for today's meeting, I wasn't sure if I would have 27 seconds or two minutes to speak. All of the people who signed up to speak at today's meeting should be able to speak for two full minutes, not just the first 20 people. Anyone willing to attend a city council meeting should be allowed to address their counsel. You shouldn't be taking a 10-minute recess when there are dozens of constituents waiting to speak to you. You shouldn't be bringing up the idea of community town halls only when public comment during meetings is limited. If you can't be bothered to sit through a full and fair public comment portion? You shouldn't be taking up space in this council. Start holding yourself accountable to your constituents, not just D M P D or police unions, or Scott Sanders, or your own self-interest and financial gains. Start holding yourself accountable to one another and to your constituents. Listen to the demands of your community, including terminate all racists, identify and fire all D M P D officers. This includes Officer Fong and O'Neal with violent records, and fire Scott Sanders and Dan O'Neill. Legalize and decriminalize. The city council must act on the cannabis task force. Defund and abolish the police. Stop terrorizing and destroying houses camps in this city. Demand answers about the 100 children that ICE took through the Des Moines Airport on April 22nd and find them. I consider Des Moines to be a great city, just one within a foreign council that's focused on reaching bankruptcy? And ignoring the very community members who elected them to office. That's all I have.
Truly Wingert?
Can you hear me? Okay, my name's Truly. Uh, my pronouns are she/her. And I would just like to uplift everything the past three speakers have said. Um, and just, I cannot believe how much of a mess and how chaotic all of these meetings are. Like, this is an embarrassment to our city. You guys should all just do us a favor and resign. Um, I don't have anything prepared because, again, you've changed all the rules. Now I have two minutes to speak. Um, so I'm just gonna go ahead and reiterate the back the black demands. So we need to terminate all racists, identify and fire all D M P D officers with violent records, and fire Scott. and fire Scott Sanders and Dana Winger. legalize and decriminalize. City council must act on cannabis task force. You guys need to actually do something with that, like what is going on there? That's so simple. Do your jobs. Defund and abolish the police. They are garbage routinely, just brutalizing Des Moines and sucking up all of our funding and not really accomplishing much. They don't really keep our community safe, so get rid of that. Also, why are you attacking a community fridge during a recession and a pandemic? Like, what, what is wrong with you all? Like, that's just completely abhorrent and disgusting. I don't understand how you can sleep at night. I hope you all have terrible sleep schedules and your mental health is on the verge of just combustion. Like, I don't understand. You're all terrible human beings. Please do better. Please reflect and do better. What else? Oh, the houseless camps, like, give them housing. What are you doing? Why are you routinely sending DMPD after our houseless camps and harassing our houseless neighbors? Give them, give them something. Do better there, you know, give them resources. Why are you not giving them resources and calling them trashy? What is that? That's, again, disgusting. You're all just terrible. Do better.
John Hardy.
Hello?
John?
Yep, hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, hi. So I'm afraid I won't have time for everything I want to say because you've made it so hard for the public to make record at your meetings. So I published the full text at makerecord.org. You are the problem. If you find yourselves asking why the public comment portion of your meetings has felt unmanageable, look in the mirror. You are the problem. There's a leadership void in Des Moines and I'm talking about you. I do see active leadership in our city, but the leadership that I see comes from people who don't hold office. I'm talking about the people I see speaking truth to power. And you know who I'm talking about. You've got yourselves all twisted up over whether or not to give people time to talk or how much time to talk. And you're missing the root of the problem. Even when we have time to talk, you don't give us the time of day. When you only give people enough time to tell you to shove it, you can't be surprised when that's all you get. And when the public makes noise about real problems and your response is inaction or worse, taking adverse action, then you're telling the public to shove it. You can't be surprised when we don't take that very well either. Y'all's failure to recognize the problem and accommodate the needs of the public to be heard has dragged on for a year now. If you find yourself asking what to do about the problem of citizens speaking at the city council.
Bridget Pedersen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, okay, it's Bridget Peterson, like the name Peter, Peterson. Anyway, my pronouns are she/her and I wasn't sure if I was going to have twenty-seven seconds or two minutes today. So I took some really sloppy notes in accordance with your really floppy meeting and I'm going to make you sit through them, like you just made us sit through all of that. My first note is for the back the black demands. I would like you to terminate all racists within the Des Moines Police Department. In fact, just defund and abolish them altogether, specifically Officer Fong and O'Neal. Also, I would like you to act on the marijuana task force recommendations to legalize and decriminalize. And then, oh, okay, what else? Next, I want to talk about the North Des Moines Community Fridge. I think it is ridiculous that now of all times is when you choose to antagonize people who are simply distributing food among people who need it most. I take food to that fridge a few times a week and it is constantly cleaned out. There are people who are food insecure in Bill Gray's board and because he's done nothing about it, we decided to put together a community fridge and now you're antagonizing it. Absolutely shameful. You guys get up to some really shameful stuff, but that takes the cake for me. So, yeah, some more specific notes. Connie, early on in the meeting, you implied that the city's business isn't our business. Actually, that's what the taxes are for. That's why we pay taxes. So the city's business is actually our business and we deserve to be privy to all of it. You can't even vote on your horrible amendments properly. You mixed voting with comment, which is illegal.
Annie Guttenkopf.
Annie, if you're on a phone, you need to hit star six to raise your hand.
All right, let's move on to Josh Cook.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Amazing. Hello, Josh, he/him pronouns. I just want to echo some of the points that John made. Like, sitting on these council meetings and getting the privilege of seeing your cameras almost makes these meetings more painful because you just all look so passive and indifferent the entire time. And I get it. And I think John's line about only giving people enough time to tell you to shove it, like, I don't know what else you guys expect. And it's, I can't believe we gave almost an hour or two a discussion about a parking lot meeting tonight or a parking lot, but when people try to talk about food or housing insecurity in the city, you've got a real quick trigger finger on their block. And in a meeting two weeks ago, I got removed. I didn't say anything foul. I didn't launch any personal attacks and I got my time taken away at the end. Yet the person before me was spewing active racist hate speech and got their entire time. So people are just really disappointed and you've caused the people that want to take part a lot of grief by having these meetings be a mess, by disrespecting people and trying to like gatekeep them from being active in their own community. It's just very weird and I don't get it. I know some of you like to think and portray yourselves as good people and the city council has just become a group of reactionaries that are now just seeking out the worst possible outcomes for people that oppose them. It's really honestly just sad. Man, I just really hope that we can remove some of y'all in some elections and start doing the work that people want to do. So I'll yield the rest of my time.
Diana Faust. Vanessa.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Morancella. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the property owner of thirty-six thirteen fifty-nine Street, Des Moines, five zero three two two, where the North Des Moines Community Fridge sits. We received a notice from the City of Des Moines Neighborhood Zoning Division dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, advising that the shed which houses the community fridge needs to be moved to the backyard of the property or removed entirely. I'm speaking to you this evening to advise why these two options will not suffice and that we intend to keep the fridge where it stands. Moving the fridge to the backyard would make it inaccessible to many people for various reasons. For example, imagine you're in need of food for yourself and you found out about this fridge, but when you went to the address where it's supposed to be located, you don't see it readily available. Would you walk into the backyard of someone's property who you don't know to find out if it's there? I know I likely would not. If we made a sign to say it's in the back, please feel free to enter the backyard. Who is to say someone driving by won't call the police thinking someone is trespassing the property? The location where it sits now is near the sidewalk, faces the street and is inviting. We do not consider removing the fridge to be a viable option either as it's already being used by many folks after only being open for over a month, a little over a month. The need for this exists and it's very real. Some folks have mentioned to us that several food pantries already exist. This is true and those are needed as well. However, most pantries come with limitations such as hours of operation, household income limits, the requirement to have a job, the requirement to have an address, et cetera. The fridge offers a twenty-four-seven access, no questions asked opportunity for folks to get the food they need. We requested the city council find a way to allow the fridge to remain and that they spend their time coming up with permanent solutions to the issue of food insecurity in our community rather than harassing folks who are attempting to fill a gap. We did email the individual in the letter. We haven't heard back from him. I also called Bill Gray. He hasn't called me back, which is not surprising because he never returns my phone calls, Bill. The entire process has been extremely frustrating, including the part where we specifically looked up any codes we would be violating prior to putting up the fridge and we didn't find any. We are asking that the city please work with the zoning committee to make an exception or variance to allow the fridge to stay and we are asking that this be done by May twenty-seventh. Thank you and fuck you all.
James Grimm.
Hello?
James?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm going to reiterate, reiterate what Vanessa said there. You got to leave that north side community fridge alone. What are they doing? Not hurting anybody. You know, I mean, if the shed had a mog emblem on it, you guys are probably all right with it. But, you know, you don't like the mutual aid organizations, you know, we don't know that, know that. You know, you don't like that they do things like put homeless people up in hotels when it's thirty below. Well, you guys can't even keep a warming center open twenty-four-seven. And then you're too shy to, you got a council member that's too shy to say anything about it. Guy dying in a porta potty. And, you know, and I had something prepared, but after listening to the Fairway parking lot fiasco thing, I, it's just, you know, it's sickening what you people do. It's, it's like you want to cut forty-six people off from speaking, but, you know, the minute some developer or grocery store chain or white power winger or, you know, one of them guys starts, you know, wanting favors from you, you're all getting on your knees like it's some kind of political bukkake show. You know, you guys should be on Pornhub, not Zoom. You know, what's wrong with you people? I mean, seriously. I mean, there's something wrong with your brains or, I don't know if you're, just don't care or money's more important to you than people. You know, what is it? Tell me. You know, you don't care about the fact that Des Moines police officers are going around beating on people with clubs, people who aren't fighting back, gang, you know, shooting black kids. You know, at the Merle Hay Mall, who aren't doing anything. There, there are no way a threat to you or to the police or anybody. But yet you allow them to, you know, get violent on people and, oh, that's okay. Yeah, we'll just promote the most violent officer and we'll, we'll, you know, make them sergeant and we'll make them.
Lennon Cardwell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lennon and my pronouns are she/her. The rules you have put in today are just another case of your continuous attempts to silence your constituents. We have seen times being restricted, which began after the fourteen-hour city council meeting in August. Today was one of the several occasions that before these new rules were approved, constituents were going to be given under thirty seconds to speak. We also have seen you constantly shutting down your constituents' voices by calling them undermain or off topic, where if you were to actually hear us out and listen, you would realize several of our concerns intertwined with agenda items. It is no coincidence that the silence seems to be especially targeted towards women and people of color. County claims under these new rules that he is pleased to be giving constituents two minutes time to speak. However, I think if county or any of you really did care, you would give us two minutes or more to speak without putting a cap of twenty speakers per meeting. If any of you cared, you would also not deny requests if someone has an already pending request to speak. While you seem to want to present these new rules as a way to make us happy and give us more speaking time, it is more clear than ever from this so-called solution that you either are truly not listening to what we are all asking of you or you just simply don't care, both which seem plausible to me. I'm also really concerned about the fact that this rule was implemented with sixty-six speakers already signed up to speak tonight. Because of these new rules, that means the next two city council meetings are already filled up. You already confirmed with people that they were allowed to speak. People may have canceled other commitments to speak tonight and now they're not able to. Or maybe there are people that didn't sign up because they couldn't tonight, but were hoping to on the twenty-fourth. And now they can't do that either. Yikes. Also, a ten-minute recess where people could be speaking is not effective. Again, sounds like siling your constituents to me. One last thing I would like clarification on in terms of this new rule, which I may have missed, is how you are going to be picking the twenty speakers. Is it going to be the first to sign up? Considering city council has targeted specific individuals in the past, I am worried that these new rules will not be fairly implemented. Anyways, all that being said, I would like to say that we need to continue working to save the North Des Moines Community Fridge. It is an essential part of this well-being of our community.
Aidan Zingler.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Aidan. My name is pronounced Aidan Zingler. My pronouns are they/them and I live in the Drake neighborhood. First, rule, the rule change feels harmful and undemocratic. Since I have two minutes now, I have amended my statement that I was going to say. Second, please let all community members speak as this meeting is for the people and not for your personal interests. Please continue to use teleconferencing technology for all future meetings to keep this council accessible to all people in Des Moines, especially the disabled community. To cease having a virtual option, silences those like me unable to physically come in person. Accessibility needs to be central to this city if it's to be truly inclusive. Third, please cease all zoning fines against mutual aid efforts in our city like the North Des Moines Fridge and keep it accessible to our community. Our mutual aid is needed due to the failure of our city to fund our local neighborhoods and our needs. Fourth, give all homeless affordable housing and stop attacking their camps. Finally, terminate all racists such as Chief Ringer. Defund, defund the police. That money can fund food insecurity, failing infrastructure, housing inequity and education in our low-income communities. We could create community crisis teams led by communities instead of using police. Please defund the police. Thank you.
Casey Erickson. Casey?
Casey, if you're on a phone, you need to hit star six and raise your hand.
Keenan Crowe.
Hi, my name is Keenan Crowe. I use they/them pronouns and I continue to be troubled with how the council has responded to community concerns about its police force. I want to just quickly lay out some of the events that we're talking about with Fong and O'Neal specifically. In twenty thirteen, Dustin Burnicle was pepper sprayed and beaten by officers Wessels and Fong, then dropped on his face while he was handcuffed. Police claimed that he was interfering with an arrest, though he was later acquitted of that charge and awarded two hundred thousand dollars in damages as part of an eight hundred thousand dollar settlement. Records made in that case showed that Fong and Wessels had previously been disciplined for using excessive force. Lonnie Porter, a black man, was in his car in twenty seventeen when he was subjected to what was called or to what was a pretextual traffic stop by Des Moines Police Officer Sean O'Neal. In twenty eighteen, the city paid him twenty-five thousand dollars to settle his lawsuit and Porter, of course, wasn't charged with anything. These are non-trivial incidents. As I said last time, no one in the banking industry would put somebody caught embezzling on their fraud task force. This is the same principle. Now, this is the last time I'll be able to speak to the council before the month of June, which everyone knows is Pride Month. I'm sure that, like every year, there will be a Pride proclamation put forth by the city. If you aren't aware of the history of LGBTQ organizing in the U.S., you may not know what Pride commemorates. Pride is a celebration meant to remember the Stonewall riots, which were themselves a reaction to unchecked police violence against members of a marginalized community. We are at a pivotal moment in history that will define how we are seen by future generations. We are at a pivotal moment in history that will define how we are seen by future generations. Community leaders who turn a blind eye toward injustice will rightfully be remembered as those who stood against justice itself. So this Pride Month, I invite you to stand on the side of justice and do the right thing. Rather than making Pride proclamations, do something about police violence. Remove Fong and O'Neal as de-escalation trainers. Start having meaningful conversations about the future of public safety in Des Moines with those who will be most impacted by it, among them people of color, LGBTQ people, and disabled people. We are tired of symbolic action not backed up by real, meaningful policy changes. Thank you.
Reverend Emily Ewing.
Reverend Emily Ewing, my pronouns are they/them. Online meetings have made city council accessible during this pandemic. It was vital during the pandemic and it is still vital. Accessibility will always be vital to the full participation and diversity of the community. Not everyone is able to access city council meetings in person. They need to be hybrid. This community has stepped up to make hybrid schools and worship services. It's your turn. Anything less is not responsive to the needs of the people of Des Moines. Also, the changes you just made to this and future meetings are concerning. Holding a vote to limit community participation without community participation is a mark of dictatorship, not democracy. Specifically, the presiding officer should not rule on the germaneness of content. This is not normal. In a democracy, the party in power does not determine what is or is not relevant in every matter under consideration. It should be now, as it should have been all these months, a parliamentarian or legal representative, not the mayor. You claim the changes give more voice to the public, but because of robust community involvement, these changes together actually severely restrict public comment even more. You need to find the 100 migrant children that are lost but definitely arrived in Des Moines last month. Finally, the North Des Moines Community Fridge is saving lives and livelihoods in Des Moines. You as elected leaders for the city and Scott are responsible for the care and well-being of the people in this community, not just the corporations. People have been dying, freezing, and going without food this entire last year, not to mention facing violence from police and evictions, all while you continue to meet and deride those who are trying to make Des Moines a better place. You as a city council and Scott need to ensure food security for every person in Des Moines. The solution for the fridge isn't getting rid of the fridge or fining them. It's creating the infrastructure and shifting funding away from police to ensure food security so that efforts like the North Des Moines Community Fridge are no longer needed because everyone has the food they need.
Hi.
Larry Carter Center.
Larry, if you're on a cell phone, you need to hit star six or on any phone, star six to raise your hand.
Let's move on to Drinda Williams.
This is Drinda Williams. I live in 50311. I'm a 1974 graduate of Roosevelt. And I have to say that city council has really frustrated me this past year in particular because of the lack of any progress towards dealing with racist policies, racist procedures, any progress in addressing bias and inequitable treatment of Des Moines citizens of color. The lack of leadership from the council to demilitarize our supposed public safety system is appalling. And I, the idea of Michael Fong and Sean O'Neal leading a de-escalation, excuse me, de-escalation training is an insult to our community. They are not suitable. They are not credible. They are not suitable to be police officers to begin with. I am looking for a city council who can lead. Winger and Sanders are not leaders and are not friends to our community. Voters like me are watching and listening. We are not interested in feel-good stories or smokescreens like the Oversight Committee Hoopla from last fall. Voters like me are interested in a public safety system that serves the public with housing, food security, mental health support, and freedom of speech and to protest. All of the public, including our black, brown, men, women, and children, need to be served in this manner. Volunteer voters like me are looking.
KT Menke.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name's KT Menke. My pronouns are they/them. Des Moines City Council, you fail your businesses and citizens over and over. Let's review. Mandelbaum came with a great suggestion and none of you supported it. Why? My guess is because y'all don't even care about those of us who've been investing in these meetings since last summer. But we are here, we are the future, period. We're not going anywhere. Then there are your practices. They're as shady as each of you. The fact that you're trying to get rid of a community fridge by creating zoning violations speaks volumes of how far you will go to cause harm. Continue to disenfranchise people in need. Who are giving, who are you trying to get, take power from? And what kind of people are you? Mind you, we are trying to take care of us. We are giving the community, giving to the community. People all over the US have started community fridges from LA, New York, Minneapolis, Oregon, and even here in Iowa. What is this council's issue? Is it the structure? Your entitlement and privilege cannot and should never interfere with the needs of others. You have no business messing around with this fridge unless it is to put food in the fridge. You continue to fail to listen to your constituents' valid concerns. Concerns like why Michael Fong and Sean O'Neal would be leading any de-escalation team is a valid concern. Which of you would hire someone who would have a history of a violent outburst to take care of your family member? This is the same concern that I have as a domestic abuse survivor. I fear for my children and I fear for the people of this city and the supportive concerns that you're not listening to. This council needs to have a change. The change needs to happen with new people on this city council. I'm asking you to please consider even giving your jobs up and allowing new people to come in. Because right now, your support isn't for the city. It's for yourselves and within the least of.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive and file all the comments, 48A through T.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, all comments are received and filed. Thank you for the motion. Want to thank all of our citizens for attending this meeting. We had some interesting business this evening that we needed to work on. And we got our city business taken care of with a couple of items that we moved forward. So I want to thank council for your patience and your work as we try to move this city forward. And until next time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.